We have people that want to speak tonight, so just a reminder that each individual has three minutes to speak. And the duration according to policy is 30 minutes for total comments. Gary Rapp.
And the microphone's over there. That's our radio. I have a few questions on the so-called early retirement of Lisa Bly. Whose idea was it to have Lisa Bly retire? Who made that decision? And why Lisa Bly? Out of all the teachers at Sevastopol. It wasn't Lisa Bly. If she was thinking about retiring, she would have told someone. I don't think Lisa Bly even knew she was retiring. Why was the thought to have Lisa Bly retire even brought up? Is it an enrollment issue? Do we need to abolish a position? What is the reason? Shame on you, school board, for allowing this to happen. She's probably the best, one of the best teachers we have in this school. The Board Policy 0144.2. Board members must serve for the best interests of the students. Lisa Berry, this is for you. Members shall avoid all conflicts of interest. Members will support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff and insist on regular and impartial evaluations of all staff. It's all I have to say.
Um, Dylan, I'm going to let you know is that we have a policy that you cannot make statements that are personally directed at a board member. So just let you know about that. I'll comment a little bit. We did reduce force in the elementary this year. The staff was notified in November that we were going to go down one section. We have three currently of sections in fourth grade and fifth grade. The fifth graders will go into sixth grade and then go down to two. So in November, the staff was notified that we'd be going down one section of elementary school and one teaching position. January, February, March, and April, staffing for 2019 and '20 and personnel reduction in force were on the agendas at those times. No one from the community contacted any administrators or came to the board at those times to address those issues. So the board moved forward. They hit their timelines in regards to layoff notices and as far as issuing contracts, those deadlines were met. And at this time, Ms. Bly is retiring due to declining enrollment, and so there's no need for a layoff notice given, a final layoff notice.
Wasn't that a reason for the new school because enrollment was increasing?
That's a different topic, and that's not true.
It shows on the records that you guys have gone up 12% in five years. I really doubt that that's not true in high enrollment.
Well, okay, well, you're on a turn. But I can address that. UW-Madison Applied Laboratory Studies did a 10-year study on our enrollment, and they're projecting us to decline in the next 10 years.
So why the new school?
Yeah.
The fall of the curtain.
I think that should be recalled.
But that's two, that's two issues, so.
I will address myself. I did consult with my own personal attorney and the school attorney as to whether I needed to fully recuse myself from the process. I wasn't involved in the process until it came to the school board for discussion, and I didn't participate in the discussion.
You were involved in the seniority vote.
Mr. Rapp. Mr. Rapp, you can't personally do that.
Act 10, actions to abolish seniority.
I wonder why.
Jody Perschelsky.
I'm Jody, and I'm a second-term PTO member and parent to a second grader and a special needs kindergartner. I understand that you guys do a very tough decision to make due to the low enrollment, but I am asking that you reconsider Lisa Bly, removing Lisa Bly from the district. I was fortunate enough to work with Ms. Bly when my daughter entered first grade in 2017. Not only was my daughter academically behind coming out of kindergarten, but also emotionally guarded due to personal issues. Ms. Bly recognized this immediately and took action. She welcomed me into her classroom and allowed me to volunteer there daily, weekly, as often as I wanted. So I personally witnessed how she taught to each student's level, reassessing daily, how she spoke respectfully and lovingly to these children. I learned that she was the president of the PTO, runs a turkey trot, creates the yearbooks, finds ways to recognize her fellow staffmates and volunteers. She works tirelessly for the school, the students, the families, and the community. By the end of the year, my daughter was ahead of expectation in all academic areas. There were no concerns of her zoning out in the classroom, which had been a concern in kindergarten and now in second grade. Her personality blossomed, and she became a confident little girl because of Mrs. Bly. Mrs. Bly even went out of her way as far as driving to Oshkosh for a special event that my daughter participated in, just to give her a bouquet of flowers and a hug that said, "I'm proud of you." She turned around and went back home to work on the farm. What teacher does that? And the answer is none. No other teacher does that. My daughter is not special. Mrs. Bly would do this for any of her students because she cares for all of them like her own. And I should mention that my daughter, as a second grader, is now behind academically again and in special services. I did request and plan on having Mrs. Bly for my son next year. She is the reason that we've stayed in this district, and I'm also where the majority of students request Mrs. Bly every year and this year as well. Now, back to low enrollment and that being your reason, I want to give you an example of another thing that I do know for a fact. There is a family who just pulled their child out with, what, seven weeks left of school because...
Jody, you have 15 seconds.
...of the underperforming staff member in a different classroom that does nothing extra that... It's just very disappointing that you would choose someone who does 110% when there are teachers in this building that kids are leaving because of.
Thank you. Ashley Miller.
I am here to speak in favor of Lisa Bly, first grade teacher. I'm the soon-to-be stepmom of one of her students, and without Lisa, we don't know where we'd be today. Let me give you a little bit of backstory. My soon-to-be stepson has had speech issues since he began to talk. He was put into speech therapy early on. Some improvement came with this, but he is still very hard to understand for anyone who did not know him well. Throughout kindergarten, we felt that he was behind. However, time and time again, we're told by staff that he was on track and doing well. The summer before first grade, we decided to have him tested with Chris Bone, Door County Speech Therapy. He was diagnosed with dyslexia. Prior to this diagnosis, we had requested Lisa as his first grade teacher. Despite constant reassurance that he was doing well and in line with his class, we didn't believe it. After all, we were almost to the end of the school year, and he didn't know his ABCs. He couldn't say them or write them, much less in order. This was alarming to us, and before speculation can be thrown, we were working with him at home as well. He entered first grade in Lisa's class, and that's when we finally had someone understanding what we were concerned about. Lisa was in contact with us from day one, expressing her concern of how far behind he was. At the beginning of the year, I volunteered in the classroom as much as I could, but as time went on and due to other job commitments I had, I was no longer able to dedicate the time in the classroom. Lisa still remained in contact with us. When he is with Andy and I, we work with him every night more than most probably have to work with their child. He gets one-on-one help structured to him daily in Lisa's classroom. Not only does he, but many other children in her classroom. Lisa will be in contact with us morning, night, and many times throughout the day if needed. We pay for outside help through Door County Speech Therapy. Lisa works closely with Chris to accomplish our goal. Looking at his math testing just for reading, he started first grade in the 10th percentile. He's now up to the 57th. To us, that means taking a kid who didn't have a chance and giving him hope. He is determined to learn and do better. The motivation he has is phenomenal, but without the right tools and people, the motivation goes nowhere. We are fearful of the backwards slide he will make next year with teachers who don't have the dedication to the students that Lisa has. We are by no means parents who expect a school to raise our kids and teach them everything they need to know in life, but we get a few hours a night. They have them all day. You show me another teacher who will show the dedication and individuality to each and every student in their room. When I heard that Lisa was being let go, I was shocked and angry. At what point did it become okay for someone's political agenda and personal vendetta against Lisa to outrank the children's education? If you are willing to get rid of, in my opinion, the best teacher at this school, do you even care about the students? I have always been proud to be a Sevastopol graduate, but the move you are making will hurt the school, the community, and ultimately the kids, which I thought were the priority here.
Thank you, Ashley. Marjorie Stotts.
I did not complete my degree in education, but have volunteered and worked with children for over 40 years from tutoring, coaching, Sunday School, 4H, and other projects, mostly in conjunction with one of my grandchildren or children. I currently volunteer in Ms. Bly's first grade classroom, where one of my grandsons is a student. Putting all personal opinions of Ms. Bly aside, this is what I have observed. I have been a volunteer tutor for well over 15 years, and after working with and observing several teachers, I consider Ms. Bly one of the best. I've seen her individualize students' work in order to push each student to do his or her own best. I've seen a highly motivated and caring teacher who takes and makes the extra time and effort to each and every one of her students so that they can achieve success both in the classroom and out. I know she works with parents to work out the best path to help their children succeed in their educational careers. She works hard to give each student a strong foundation in which to build their educational careers. I know she does this because my grandson is one of those that is needed and needs an extra boost. Ms. Bly gives each volunteer written or verbal instructions on what she wants the volunteer to work on with the children, what her goals are, and asks for feedback so she can keep track of where they are and if there's any additional help that they may need. This past fall, when I first started, I was amazed at the wide gap that there was in the levels all the children were at. They were everywhere from already reading books to having to learn the letters of the alphabet, let alone writing it. With classrooms diversified, it's hard to teach and not lose 2/3 of the class. Ms. Bly has surrounded herself and her class with a wide variety of volunteers, who many have extremely impressive resumes, who dedicate their time to giving our precious children the boost they need to succeed. At times, there are many as four helping out at the same time. As the year went on, it was exciting to see the strides and advances that each child made and how excited and proud she was with them at their achievements. I feel we'll be doing the future Sevastopol pioneers a great disservice if we were to lose a teacher of Ms. Bly's caliber. Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. Jason Mann.
Jason Mann. A little bit, I don't know many of you, some of you I do. I grew up, went to Southern Door School, moved out of town for quite a bit. In 2006, when we moved back with our family, young family, we started looking at schools. At that time, Sevastopol seriously was not even on my radar. We settled in the city of Sturgeon Bay, actually only three blocks from Sturgeon Bay School. Our children started off at St. Peter's, and quickly we realized that we needed to make the next step and transition them into a full-time school, not within St. Peter's. We started looking at the schools, and by looking at the schools, I mean, we came and interviewed with each school all the way up to Gibraltar. My wife was pretty adamant that we would travel as far as we needed to go to educate our children. We were very impressed with Sevastopol at the time. You know, we got a tour, not only the veteran teachers who had been here many years, but all the new teachers and the new energy of the school. We really loved how everything was together, and the high school kids were with the younger kids, and just that synergy. We started and we brought our three children here to Sevastopol. It is, you know, we're constantly reminded why we've chosen this school. The national awards are well-known. You know, I understand what it is as a board to make the tough decisions that you guys make. None of this stuff is easy. I didn't really know much about what's going on with Ms. Bly, so I'm not going to get into the politics of all that. The speakers before have pretty much, you know, said a lot about who Ms. Bly is and the type of teacher she is. With that being said, my son is currently in her class. He is one of the students that I believe came in as a deficit. There's a lot of things that should have been caught earlier on. We're very engaged as parents, and we're trying to kind of work through these things. Staff has been great. Ms. Bly's been great. As soon as we had to go to outside resources and get diagnosis and get a plan of action, you know, I'm having to spend a lot of money this summer willingly to bring my child up to a certain level and get him, you know, back on track. That's nothing to be said against Ms. Bly. She instantly, when we had this diagnosis, jumped into action, provided customized plans for him.
15 seconds.
So all I can say is, I know you guys have some tough decisions in front of you, but we've gone through some real drastic changes here over the last few years with the staff in the elementary and middle school. I just ask that you really consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jason. Melissa and Lynn, are you signed up for your presentations?
Yeah.
Receipt is Watkins.
Hi, I don't have anything planned, and I don't usually come to these. Everybody's come up and said how wonderful Lisa Bly is, so I don't need to reiterate how amazing of a teacher she is. So I have more questions, I guess, than anything when it comes down to this. If we are having low enrollment, why did we hire teachers within the last couple of years? The extra teachers that we had? I only have three minutes, so answer.
You're talking about last year with the...
Yeah, you guys hired teachers.
Correct.
So if we're low enrollment, why are you hiring teachers?
That class needs some extra attention, and we got them the attention they needed. Now, a year and a half later, they're back to where we think they're adequate.
Where you think they are, so you don't have the facts.
You'll never know for sure.
As far as low enrollment.
We won't know until they graduate and become adults, what kind of people they're going to be, but we think we have a better...
My second question comes down to why Lisa Bly? Why was her head on the chopping block? Of all of the teachers, including the new ones that you just got last year and the year before, why Lisa Bly was cheap pick out of all of them?
Like I said at the beginning, that's a personnel issue, and we can't share individual facts with a lot of personnel.
A personality issue?
Personnel.
As far as what?
It's personnel. So the school board and the district cannot discuss an individual personnel.
Because you guys don't get along with her, or I don't, like I said, I don't...
Again, we are not liberated to speak, and when you said she was on the chopping block, the question would be, where did you hear that from? Because it didn't come from the board or myself.
It's door company. Come on.
Okay.
Everybody hears everything. On top of that note, I do have a letter from an anonymous parent to the members of the school board.
Is it anonymous?
And you can't report for someone else.
Why not?
Because you're allowed three minutes to speak.
All right, well, then I'll take it as my own.
Okay.
"To the members of the school board, do unto others as you would want done to yourself. That is what I teach my children. Yet, time and time again, I watch and listen to what happens in the school district. I realize I'm fighting an uphill battle. I want each of you to ask yourself and be honest with yourself, have I been kind? Have I been fair? Have I been truthful? I'm not preparing this letter to help a teacher get her job back. I'm writing this as a parent to make sure you know how I feel. The community supports Lisa Bly. Why? The answer is simple. Anyone I ask, the answer always starts with, 'She's the best teacher I've ever met.'" Then they go on to say how kind, caring, considerate, honest, and humble she is. "Lisa has always put the children first, has always taught each child individually to support their own needs, and goes above and beyond every day in every way. My goodness, she was prepared to give her own life to save our children's lives when we had the active threat in our school. Lisa Bly sounds pretty remarkable, right? Which leads us to a question of why? Why is our school board allowing this to happen? This community wants and deserves the truth. Please, I ask you again to treat each other the same way you would want to be treated and practice what we teach." Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Hamkins. No, Dan. Favor. Rebecca. No. Jamie Stephan.
To the Sevastopol school board members, there are many, many things that go through my mind when I hear the name Lisa Bly. One is compassion. Compassion that she has for her students. Love, the love that she has for her students. Kindness, care, generosity, hope. I could go on and on with the words that Lisa has shown over the years as a teacher here at Sevastopol School. My son, who is now in third grade, was and still is getting bullied. But it all started in kindergarten. He was such a loving, kind-hearted little boy, leaving 4K, and when he entered kindergarten, he changed. He was angry. He cried for no reason. He was shutting himself off from the world. We finally got him to talk to us, and that is when we discovered that he was getting bullied by students that were older than him. We talked to his teacher, she did nothing. We talked to the principal at the time, she did nothing. It was a mess. Summer break finally arrived, and I requested he have Lisa Bly in February entering first grade. In a matter of a month or two having Lisa as his first grade teacher, our son blossomed. He had confidence. He was taking down the wall that he built the year before. He was actually smiling and laughing again. It was the best thing we as parents could have seen. Lisa Bly cared enough. She built up his confidence. She loved our child like he was one of her own. Finding out that Lisa Bly is getting forced out after many years of dedication to this school has not just angered me along with other parents, but it also says something about how the school board, the superintendent, and the administration is running this award-winning school and education. Our daughter is going to be entering kindergarten next year, and I'm so afraid that she is going to be left behind and fall through the cracks. You need to listen to this community and really look at what you would be doing if you let this amazing teacher go."
Somebody signed up, I don't know. It's not you.
It's for the presentation. She's also for their presentation.
Bianca's a student. Jason Berry. Oh, Steve Gregerson. Steve Gregerson.
Jorgensen.
Oh, Jorgensen.
Obviously, I'm here in support of Lisa Bly, as everybody in the place is. You talk about overstaffing and get rid, and overstaffing in fourth and fifth grade. Why do you pull a first-grade teacher? What's the reason for that? And, to be honest, the best teacher in the school. Makes no sense. Makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. I want to applaud three out of seven members on the board that actually voted for the school, for the good of the school. There's been a couple of elected here in the last year or whatever it was that seem to have a problem thinking by themselves and need to be told what to do. You know, I guess I'm asking you to grow a set and socially do what I didn't...
That's out of line. That's out of line.
And actually do what's good for the kids. You're here to put the best teachers in the classrooms, and obviously she is. I don't care if anybody on this board, I don't care if anybody likes her. I don't care if there's a teacher in the place that doesn't like her. That doesn't matter. The fact is, you're supposed to put, you're here to put the best teachers in the classroom, and she's the best, by far. So.
So it is a personnel matter. If any of you have questions about the building process, I know Mr. Lukey would be happy to talk to you. If you have concerns regarding your child's education in other grades, I know Mr. Hiltz and Mr. Lukey would be happy to talk to you. There was a lot of whys. When we hired, when someone's hired, the administration goes through a process of determining the qualities of that person and what makes that person right for the job or not right for the job. And when we have to reduce staff, they have to go in the same process. They have a process in which they evaluate all of the qualities and determine what's best for the students.
Lisa Bly would not be on top of that if that was the case.
I know that's not what you want to hear, but talk to Mr. Lukey and Mr. Hiltz.
I would hope that any teacher that was in the situation, that some parents would come forward and say that they're best, because we do have a good staff. We were satisfied with the performance of our staff.
If you took it up with the community, none of us would agree.
You had four board meetings that was on the agenda.
You guys are all secretive.
Yeah, very secretive.
There's only certain things we're allowed to speak about when it comes to personnel. That's the rules and laws that govern us.
You guys govern yourselves.
Okay. Thank you everyone for your comments. Nothing everyone for your comments. We're going to move on to the presentations. The first one by the robotics club. Mr. Phillips.
Do they already make their decisions?
Yeah. Don't you say and listen to what the kids have, because there's some really cool thoughts coming up, and you might want to stay and be enlightened by what's really happening here with these awesome kids.
That's nice, but my child's not up yet. He's only in second grade and first grade.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips, we have really wanted to include robotics as part of our curriculum, and I approached Mr. Phillips because he has a technical aptitude and asked him if he had any interest in creating a club or an organization to support our students' interest, and he jumped on it right away, so much so that we're seeking approval for the club tonight. However, Mr. Phillips has already gone and done a number of things to secure some resources for this club and get our kids started. And you can see by the participation that it's very popular with students. Students give up their lunchtime, they give up multiple opportunities to be able to come down and work with some of these tools. We hope to build this into our curriculum even more so that it's part of our instruction with us. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, so talking about the computer and robotics club, actually, you know, it's not a secret that STEM careers and technology careers are coming, are going to be a big part of the future, and there's a shortage in those areas across Wisconsin and across the nation. So I'm not the only teacher that's looking for other ways that we can incorporate, you know, scientific and technological type of areas into our curriculum with our school. It's kind of hard to add more classes, especially in like computer science, where it could be a whole department or whatever it is. So I've been looking for avenues to incorporate programming and that type of thing. With the robotics and the fab lab kind of coming down the road, you know, the only thing different between a RC car and a robot is the robot has a computer on it. So computers and robotics, they really go hand in hand. So kind of working on that. That was the reason I kind of started thinking about it, started working on it. So after I talked to Mr. Bear in the beginning of the year, kind of got the okay, started thinking about ideas, whatever I need. Well, if we're going to work on robots, we need tools, we need a place where we can have this stuff out. We can't just, we've been working on this competition robot that we have here for a couple of months, or I'd say about a month. You don't get a lot done in 15 minutes a day. It goes kind of slow, okay? But that's what we've been working on. But we needed somewhere to keep that open and out so that people don't mess with it and we have the tools available. And what's a computer club without a computer and something to do? So I wrote a grant to work there, getting some money so we could get some things. And one of the things we got, we got that awesome computer that's back there. We bought all the component parts individually, and then we built that as part of my PC class. And it's a powerful computer so that I can operate the virtual reality system that Jacob has over here. This is just the headset for it, but this is top-of-the-line HTC Vive Pro reality system. I've had easily 250 kits. I've had easily 250 kids have tried that in my room since I've got, since we set that up.
Bring it around so you can pick, come around in front of the table. Don't hand it off.
You can just pass it around, yeah, let's pass it around.
Don't drop it.
But to run that, you need to have a pretty powerful computer. So, that's how that kind of came about with the computer. You need a decent computer to be able to run that. So, that's all that. Let's see here. So far with that, I've had all my third graders in school have tried that. All the second graders, except for probably half of this high class still has to try it. All the sixth graders and all the seventh graders, that's why I could be on. And then a lot of high schoolers. So, right now I have signup sheets for the resource hour for my lunch period for high school and lunch period for middle school. So, there's always somebody wanting to do that. Anyway, moving right along. So, we were looking at what could we do. One of the first things we wanted to kind of think about was there's lots of robotics competitions out there, different kind of robotics programs. So, we were looking at one we had heard about called First Robotics. And really didn't know anything about it. But I got some students together that over spring break. On Friday of spring break, I took a bunch, what, about seven, seven students, and we went down to Milwaukee. First, we stopped at a place called Lab Midwest, which does sell industrial robots. And so, we looked at some of the stuff they had on display. And then we went to UW Milwaukee Panther Arena and saw the First Robotics competition that they were putting on there. That was their, I think it was a regional competition, I'm not sure what it was. But it was impressive. It was so impressive that I decided that that is not where we need to be. That was a very... They build these 120-pound robots. They have industrial sponsors. These robots must cost thousands of dollars. They were had a weight, they were in the 120 to 150 pound weight. So, these robots pretty much scared me out of it. I was like, okay, that's not really what I was thinking about for our school. But what I did find out while I was there, I got a, somewhere along the line, I found this little handout. And if you look inside the back cover, you'll see this little chart here, this little thing. It's really small and hard to read. But you can see the different levels of competition. Maybe you've heard of the LEGO challenges. So, the first challenges are part of the LEGO challenges. The first LEGO Junior League is from grades kindergarten four. Then you have the first LEGO league is from grades four to eight. The first robotics challenge that we went to see was actually just high school. And then look at this other one, this First Tech Challenge, it's grades seven through 12. And instead of building a robot from scratch, you build a robot from a set of parts. So, they give you, you buy a competition kit, and you have to build your robot out of that set of parts. So, that makes it more entry level for us. And since, originally I was thinking mostly high school, but I had so many middle schoolers that were interested. And then this was seven through 12. So, anyway, the First Tech Challenge is kind of what we would like to do as an annual, maybe go to a competition or something like that. The way they do their competitions is more like a basketball game, I would compare it to. You get, each school builds one robot, and then your team gets put on a team with other schools. And then those teams battle it out. And then they do a couple of double eliminations, and then they kind of advance. And then the teams that end up being, so it's kind of luck and skill to end up at the top. And then that's how you would go on. If you made it through all of that, if you're all the winners, and you have to be on the good team, you would maybe go on to something down the road. They have some, they have national competitions and stuff like that. I doubt it would be a little while before we get to that point. But anyway, that's the deal with the First Robotics. This is just some information on the First Tech Challenge more specifically because that's the one we're kind of looking at and interested in. So, you can look at that at your leisure.
So, would that be a goal of yours for next year, to attend the First Tech Challenge?
Yeah.
And what month is that in?
Well, on this thing here, I don't have an exact date on it yet because it is in the fall. This one here on the second sheet, it says season overview. So, it says May, registration opens, and September is the kickoff. October to February are your league and events, league events. November through March are your state and regional tournaments. And if you ended up going to championship, then that would be in April. This year, they were done, the First Robotics, they were part of them. Most of this happens in the fall. It would mostly be done by like, you start right after September, and then we would be done around there.
Where is it all held?
It varies. Most of it's in Wisconsin for the local and the regional. And then this year, the national was in Detroit, Michigan. I still have a lot of working to do on this, so yeah, I don't know anything about this First Tech Challenge.
But are there like competitions like in Green Bay and Appleton, and you know, are there small, local ones?
There are local ones, and you can set up competitions too. Right now, we're just meeting at lunch. We're doing high school, middle school at lunch. Like I said, about 15 minutes a day, we're working on the robots. Other things we're thinking about doing are maybe a local, like just with our club, doing a, they want to do like a battle bot board. I don't know if you've seen on TV with the battle robots, battle it out. So, something like that, maybe. More field trips, we'll try to get some more field trips with manufacturing facilities that use robots. Guest speakers, presenters. So, that's it. We just like to be officially recognized as a club then. We have to move forward.
Do the students have things they want to show us?
I wanted to, yeah, point out a couple of things, so.
Standing there with their stuff, so let's see.
The robot that Merrick is holding is one of the robots that we got started with this year from Tech Ed. Mr. Semrell had ordered them, but they never got opened. They never got opened. And so, he gave them to us, so that kind of got us started this year. That's a claw bot. Then this one here is actually part of our competition robot. This is from the competition kit for the First Tech Challenge. This one's a work in progress yet, we're still getting this one going. They interact with two of those more rolophones, actually do the communications and programming all through those. And I'd like to acknowledge Madison Lopez. Madison here has been like the main builder of the competition robot here. She's been coming in during her middle school lunch and working on it a little bit every day. And then Tyler, where's Tyler at? Tyler saved us this week trying to get the phones figured out. So, he was very instrumental in that process. And Jacob here, he comes in every morning and sets the VR up for me and gets everything rolling and helps people when they can't see what else they're doing. And everybody else is kind of helps when they have a teacher.
Mr. Phillips, what would you say is your board number?
Well, we're, that's participating now. The team can have up to 15 members. Registered members that could actually go to the competition as registered members. We can have more than that in the club. Right now, I would say Jamie's kind of handing out. These are probably most of our, we have Ezra probably too, and this probably a few more. This is probably most of our group, probably added three or four.
I would like to see you doing this because if you've seen the STEAM features on WLUK that CISO 7 is sponsoring, and I saw the list last night at the CISO meeting, and they were all, all Door County schools except Sebastopol. So, I'm glad we're getting into this. They were all featured except us.
As part of the robotics, by robots?
Any type of STEAM project, yes. But robots could certainly be that. I think Michikot might have been one that I saw with robots.
So, this is a presentation tonight. This will be coming back to us on a future board meeting for consideration for approval. So, if you have questions tonight, you can ask them, Dave. Maybe you'll, maybe you'll go home and think of questions, and you can forward them, and Mr. Lukey will forward them to Dave for answer next time.
This has a lot of the, just the regular good information about the First Tech Challenge that we're interested in. I think that's the main thing.
I would say the biggest thing I would like to know about is more of, well, the locations because there's travel involved, which then occurs expect.
Well, like last year, all I know is about the UW Milwaukee one and the Michigan. I got to go.
Well, I think the club, and what I was going to say is the level of competition isn't the goal. It's preparing and the work and coming in early and the knowledge you gain. If you win it all or you don't, you still learn a whole lot. And I know like, my son mentioned, he's been in your robotics lab. And I know next year, as much free time as he can find, you know, there's an interest and there's a growing interest. So, and I, you know, to your point, there might be some decisions that maybe we can't afford every competition, you know? But I think overall, recognizing as a club and encouraging student participation has been helped a lot of us.
Well, we would like to do, like to continue to write the grants like I've already been doing. And then, so far, they've been grant funded. I'm pretty sure we could probably continue to find that money, but if we could do a fundraiser a year, I'm sure we would be fine. You know, maybe if we actually do an international, we might need a little help. Yeah, other than that, I think we'll be, be all right.
That would be a great problem to have.
Grants and donations, Mr. Phillips, because I do see our businesses stepping forward and saying, these are the types of skills that our students need to have. In fact, we did some presentations to community business, our community business. It's one of the things that they highlighted that was missing from our curriculum. And that's when I came back and I said, yep, you're right. And that's where the challenge really came from. So, those things are happening, and we, the competition is great. The focus though is getting the equipment in the kids' hands so they can, they can go. And if it draws them in, they're learning times.
Any other questions for Mr. Phillips or the students at this time? Well, then we'll see you back in the future meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, dude, that's all.
Oh, I thought that was my stack.
You want to take my spot?
Then we have Mrs. Malkor and Mrs. Cati with the SAGA Club.
Could I, could I introduce them really quickly? Well, first of all, I just wanted to say to Bianca and Lily and Ethan just how impressive your presentation was when I first was invited to see it before everyone here tonight. And I just wanted to say quickly, thank you so much for the hard work that went into the presentation that's tonight. But most importantly, thank you so much for the message that you are bringing to ensure that all students at Sebastopol feel like they belong, they have a voice, they are accepted. I just want you to know how proud I was to be able to listen to you last week. And I wish you the best of luck tonight, and you're going to knock them dead. So, thank you so much.
Just laying down here? We need to move?
Yeah.
I was mom moment. I was just like, oh, mom.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bianca, and I'd like to thank a few people. First, I'd like to thank my two amazing friends, Ethan and Lily, for really helping me put this presentation all together. I wouldn't be at the spot that I am now without them, so thank you. Then I'd like to thank my advisors, Mrs. Malkor and Miss Cati, for kind of guiding us in the right direction and helping us get here today, so. Then lastly, I'd like to thank all of you guys for watching and supporting me. It really helps. Since I was young, I've heard people all around me tell me to be myself, to be proud of who I am. And that's what others get in my way. At the time, I didn't follow that advice. Why? Well, why should I be the one who everyone looks down on? Why should I be the one that everyone makes fun of? I mean, really, we're told to be ourselves, but then as soon as we leave social norms, we get criticized. As a scared, anxious little kid, that is not who I wanted to be. So, I did my best to blend in, and I refused to think I was different from anyone else. Even when I did things deemed as weird, they were never too far-fetched or crazy. About two years ago, I started to recognize that I wasn't just attracted to boys. I liked girls as well. I hated the idea of being like this. Kids constantly use homophobic slurs or phrases such as, oh, that's gay, or other more powerful words and phrases. I didn't want to be different. That is, until one of my friends came out to me, and then another. That's when I realized that there is a community of LGBTQ plus kids in our school. Eventually, I came out as well. I was aware of the existence of hate towards members of the LGBTQ plus community, but I thought that our school and its patrons would be more accepting based on the values our Sebastopol teaches its students. I soon realized I was wrong. My peers constantly talk about my relationship in an overly sexualized way. They tell me that what I'm doing isn't normal, and they make assumptions on my personality based on my sexuality. The harassment over my sexual orientation has become extreme. For example, one day while riding the bus, a student said something that was so degrading, I feel that repeating it verbatim would be too shocking. Suffice it to say, the student told me that I should mutilate my body and that I should rid myself of the genitalia I have now because obviously liking girls means that I wanted to be a boy. I was outraged when these things happened, but I knew that this type of discrimination existed, so I blamed myself for bringing on this negativity. I wanted to make a difference, but what good can a kid like me do, especially when it comes to such a broad topic? One day, Mrs. Malkor introduced an editorial project that we would be doing. We had to choose a controversial topic, and I knew what my paper would be about, LGBTQ plus rights. This is my opening, my chance to do good, spread awareness. By the time we actually started writing this paper, I had a burning passion for the subject. I did lots of research, and at one point, I had to schedule an interview, so I did one with Miss Cati. We talked for a while, and she told me about the many activists that she had known in her lifetime. She told me that one of them made a gay straight alliance in her old high school. That's when the thought hit me, why don't we have one of these in our school? Many kids, many kids seem to be clueless when it comes to the LGBTQ plus community. And I think a lot of mixed feelings could be easily resolved with the help of a little bit of knowledge. This could be a great chance for us to not only bring those who are in the community themselves, but allies or people who support us together. So, I reached out to Miss Malkor and presented the idea to my friends. Since the idea first came up, Ethan, Lily, and I, as a team, have been working very hard together to do some research and put some thought as to how our alliance, which would be called Saga, will be run. This is our presentation. So, what is Saga? Saga stands for Sexuality and Gender Alliance. It is an organization with the goal not to only raise awareness, but also bring kindness and support to the LGBTQ plus community within our school. Everyone is welcome, LGBTQ plus people and their straight allies.
Saga will ensure that everyone who needs it has a safe place to express themselves securely within the school environment. We'll also work to make our school a more accepting place using education. We'll work together to empower those who feel powerless and help allies stick up for those being hurt.
Another thing we plan on doing is identifying these issues in the school and community in general and thinking of constructive solutions to them. We won't just work to spread awareness, to cut down bullying. We will also work together to help everyone be more comfortable with themselves. Why do we need Saga? We need Saga because of the discrimination and hate towards the LGBTQ plus community that we see every day on buses, in hallways and even our classrooms. Places where we have been told are safe to be our true selves end up being places where we now see that as a lie. When this first became an idea, there was a topic of concern that I was troubled with. Would I, a straight ally, also be discriminated for supporting this community? Then I thought, this is what we're trying to fix. We need an educative support system so that everyone feels safe. This organization will not only help members of the LGBTQ plus community, but also allies who want to support people on the spectrum without feeling like they're made for us as well. If allies such as myself have opportunities to support this community, we would definitely be more likely to take them.
Saga also provides great leadership opportunities for those who may not find interest in other existing school-based organizations. It's a good opportunity for those who just want to actively contribute to the LGBTQ plus community as well.
The statistics that go with the bigotry and hate against LGBTQ plus people are alarming. Three out of 10 kids under this category commit suicide every year. This makes me look around at my friends and wonder if any of them could ever be reduced to only a number in a mental health magazine.
There's been a recent increase in cases relating to mental health issues among teenagers, anxiety, depression and even suicide. Many of our existing school organizations are currently focused on how they can benefit people suffering from mental health disorders.
However, something that isn't talked about is how prevalent these said disorders are with the LGBTQ plus students who don't feel like they're represented in their school environment. Having this club will not only bring awareness to students, but also provide students suffering from mental health problems with support. So what will Saga look like? Saga is a completely run, student-run organization that offers positions such as treasurer, secretary, officer and more, that provide both leadership skills and learning opportunities.
Saga will be meeting at least twice a month and will have meetings for both the entire group and just for its main officers. Saga will also take part in fundraising events and will work towards bringing, bringing means of LGBTQ plus education to the school system such as educated speakers.
When problems arise, there have to be long-term solutions, especially when it comes to the safety of our friends and family. With the help of Saga, we will provide solutions to accomplish our goal of making schools a safer environment for everyone. Thank you. And now I'd like to invite our two advisors to speak.
Thank you, all three of you, for that wonderful, wonderful speech. Hello, I'm Lynn Cotty, middle school science teacher here at Sebastopol. Melissa Malkor and I have been asked by these three students to be advisors to Saga here at Sebastopol. As advisors to Saga, our roles would include the following. One, to provide and identify regular opportunities for skill building, for skill, yes, skill building, leadership and learning. Two, help students learn how to navigate the ins and outs of the school system in terms of laws and policies and to serve as liaison between faculty and Saga. And three, to encourage student leaders in their ideas, goals and support them in their scheduled meetings.
So Saga is really a student-run group, student-led, so we will be supporting them in their ideas and their leadership. We will be helping them figure out how they want to run their meetings, set their agendas and decide which issues are important to them and how to tackle those issues. We hope to instill a sense of skill and competence in their roles. We want to help them think critically, run their club and plan effectively. With the addition to Saga, we hope to help them learn how to deal with their concerns and make change effectively. With the addition of Saga to Sebastopol, we are working towards accomplishing a goal of trying to make our school a safer environment for every student. Thank you.
Is that the end of the presentation? Okay, then we'll open it to, for questions to the advisors or the students?
I would just like to commend all of you on your efforts and the excellent, excellent presentation. It was fabulous, it really was. And I would also like to offer, I was fortunate when I worked in Green Bay to have two people on my staff who have done some excellent work throughout the state and this whole area, particularly with gay-straight alliances, getting them started in schools. And when I mentioned to them, this was on our agenda, they offered their help to be resources and they also identified another person in Green Bay who is at East High School, who would be more than happy to help too, because they have been through this process for several years and would be more than happy to offer any suggestions or answer any questions or provide resources.
Is this a national organization or is this something you're developing on your own? Is Saga an existence already?
So GSA is a national organization. Recently, it has really transformed into more of a Saga, more schools are going to that just because it's a more inclusive term. We got most of our information for this club from national resources and from state resource called G-Safe that works with these groups specifically.
What grade levels are you looking to include? Like how, middle school, high school or younger, or what are you thinking?
I was kind of hoping to include all of middle school, but I think at the very least I'd like to include eighth grade throughout high school.
Okay. Is that how, whole group, kind of?
Yep.
Okay. And then you mentioned fundraising and then you mentioned guest speakers. Would the fundraising be to bring in those guest speakers?
The fundraising would be for many things, but yes, that would be one part of it.
Tell me, many other things would be, are there events to go to or conferences or expand?
There are LGBTQ plus leadership groups in places such as UWGB where they go there for, I think it's just a few days and they're taught ways to deal with anxiety and depression and just kind of what comes at the community.
They're also teaching them during these meetings how to run a successful GSA and a long-term GSA. There are bi-yearly meetings that we've found that meet around the state for students, again, it's kind of a mini-conference every semester where students again can learn how to have a successful and productive group.
Any other questions at this time? If there aren't, again, this will be coming back to us on a future agenda for approval, so if you have questions, get them to Mr. Hilt and we can get them to the group. So I guess we'll see you back here in a future month.
I would hope that both of these, we could bring them back at the next meeting so that we have the momentum going to get it going and not have to wait.
Oh, as advisors, if June works for them and their kids, because it'll be June, final school, final year of school. So someone might be, you know, but yeah, that's not a problem if it's the advisors and the majority of their kids are available, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will then move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board members wish to have renewed from the consent agenda? During that, then, the consent agenda is approved by, a consent including the MFC Foundation, $1,500 for Destination Imagination, the Gen Petroleum, $461.50 for the music department, the Culvers donation of $1,039.80 for the fifth-grade Trees for Tomorrow trip, the Jacksonport Advancement Corporation, $500 to Destination Imagination, and the Friends of Gibraltar, $4,667 for the Challenge Day, 2019, which I think was back in September.
No, this is for this year.
Oh, 2019. Okay, so the consent agenda is approved by consent. We'll move to the administrators' reports then. Ms. Marvah?
I'd like to start. I, the, I wanted to highlight two things this month. The first one is, you know, I just wanted to wrap up the first year of Stride and let you know how successful it was for, I would say the majority, well, all of the Door County schools. The collaborative, and I know I've spoken on it a couple of times, but, you know, I get the opportunity to go and go to month, well, not even monthly, I guess, twice a month we meet. And it's wildly successful. All of the schools are happy and I just wanted the board to know that since we had started Stride, that there had been, there had been 66 counseling visits for our students. And when you think about that, you think about the result, there are seven kids being consistently seen and one offsite being consistently seen. The impact that it's having on our kids is significant. So I just wanted you to know that, that final number. And also, I wanted to say just thank you to, you know, Sue and to Cindy for all the work that you did to get that momentum going and that grant written, because it has been submitted again and we are anxiously awaiting to see if it gets approved again so we can continue this incredible opportunity for our kids. So it's really fantastic. And the other exciting news is in summer enrichment, we're up to 144 students. Crazy. It's fantastic, you know? Every time I give more names to rock. But, you know, it's just such a great, it's a great problem to have and there's such enthusiasm and the, I can't say enough about the staff and the support staff that are working so hard to make this an amazing summer experience for our kids. So I'm really looking forward to this summer and I know the kids are.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Hilt?
To start off with, I can't believe that we are this far into the year. It just seems like it is going so fast. There's still so much to try and get in. The one thing I'd like to highlight is something that I haven't yet experienced here, but we're excited about putting it together is the last Friday of school. We're gonna do, I know that in the past there's been a track kind of event day, that kind of thing. We're gonna do kind of a take on that. But we're gonna do more of a field day with a variety of different activities, not just track. But with that, we're also going to expand that to things that are gonna happen over the course of the week. We're gonna have all of the kids in all the grades divided into four teams and this will give the kids an opportunity to cheer for each other across the grade levels and compete a little bit. Some of the competition will happen in the classrooms, so the kids won't have to just be athletically inclined in order to be successful. Different challenges each day. Those points will be tallied and then we'll announce those at the end of each day so the kids can kind of see where their team is going. And then on that Friday, we'll have assembly, picnic and we'll finish that up with field events and including relay races and those kinds of things and tally up those scores, but really making that last full week something exciting for the kids. Try and keep their focus a little bit. To tie in with that, one of the things that we're going to do with the suggestion of Mr. Sheehan is incorporating the PBIS tickets. We've done some pride tickets with the kids. We don't formally have PBIS in place yet, but we do give tickets out to the kids for doing good things and to maintain their behavior that week. Teachers will get the opportunity to get those tickets and then the kids can put those tickets in containers that will be in each of the classrooms for their team's color. We'll add those things up and the kids that get more tickets, they'll be adding their points to the team. So we're hoping that that will have a positive effect on, again, keeping everybody's focus and their behavior for that last week. So, a little bit of that.
Thank you. Ms. Gervais?
Thank you. My, my report really highlights all the celebrations that take place this time of the year in order to recognize our students. And there are many things happening from high school graduations, senior awards, middle school graduation, middle school awards, eighth grade class trip, senior reading casino night, prom. There's just so many things happening in our community and this is all a result of our faculty, so we had a chance to celebrate them as well with Faculty Appreciation Week and that week was outstanding. Administrative Assistant Day, all of those things that bring us together as a school and make us a wonderful place to be. But saying that, those are all adult-driven activities. Today we saw a few student-driven activities, which is really remarkable. But even then, I just had this experience about a month ago and I want to talk a little bit about Simon's Carnival. Because that came to be because we had some seniors that came to me and said, "We'd like to do something great. We'd like to do something special. We'd like to give back to our school." We problem-solved, we brainstormed for a little while and we came up with Simon's Carnival. Our seniors would like to host a carnival for all of our elementary students on June 10th. Invite them over, bouncy houses, petting zoo, snacks, things for them to enjoy. But really, it's about bringing our community together to recognize that Simon's has been a parent to all of our kids. Somebody that even our seniors will remember, her generosity and her kindness and how she greets everybody each day. So we've invited the Simon's family to be a guest at that and Mrs. Simon's is hopefully going to be able to join us. And we're gonna finish that afternoon then with a community event as well in our recognition. So it's really nice that we do these things to celebrate, but then our kids recognize that and then they bring all of these opportunities and we have things like a carnival for this Simon's that invites elementary students to be part of that. So I'm really appreciative of our student passion and leadership that they're offering to our school. So, thank you.
We had strategic planning on Wednesday. Aaron Malzuski from CSU Sevillazaki helped train Mr. Bear and Ms. Jenkine because they were busy working the other time he came up and trained the other two action team leaders. This coming Thursday, May 23rd, we'll have a staff meeting with the aides and the teachers where Aaron will catch us up to speed on the strategic planning up to this date and then he'll explain the concept of the core advisory committees that are gonna help accomplish the action team goals and we're gonna start that process. The action team leaders kind of have an idea. Some people they like on their team. We want people to volunteer in areas where they feel like they have passion and we want them to be on teams where we think they have some skill set that's gonna be helpful. The ECO Lab, we have run Dunn Road. Last year, a couple of our teachers spent some time clearing off the pathways because it's been neglected over the last few years. The second grade team has taken up on themselves to start that initiative again. They're working with the high, the high school and middle school science teachers. They're gonna have a few extra days here of cleaning brush and basically they're gonna have the adults with chainsaws and some of our own children carrying the brush away. We've added some signage to it so you know where the two loops are. It's 71 acres total over there and we've been underutilizing it, so we're gonna start picking it up. And then we'll have a brand-new grand opening for it on June 15th. And one of the portion is there's a gate over there currently that's not functioning correctly and they want to know if that gate can be removed or not. So sometime Rock and I will look at the gate. When you came in tonight, you, maybe you noticed the people working on the doors, they're putting the safety film glass on. They're supposed to do that tomorrow, but they came today early, so that's good. That is from the first round of the Department of Justice Safety Grant. That was awarded last summer and they had such a backlog on schools waiting for the film to be installed that we're finally getting ours now, so that's good. And on Monday, Sheriff Sternard and Officer Hilselbeck, who's gonna be our SRO, showed up to our administrative team meeting. The SRO is going to be using Core Matter Projects Curriculum for fourth graders with the follow-up curriculum in seventh grade. In order for that to be taught at our school, it is co-taught, so Allison Newman has agreed to go to training this summer to become certified in Core Matters Project. Just because the curriculums in fourth grade and seventh grade, it doesn't mean he's limited to visiting those two classrooms. He's gonna visit all the classrooms and we're gonna adhere that based on our needs here at each grade level. But the focus will be fourth and seventh so that they get that particular curriculum at that time. So, that's moving forward.
Great questions for Mr. Hilt. None. We'll move to the core planning team update, which met today.
Sure, we also had May 2nd, so we've had two meetings.
Oh, yeah, we have had two.
And I'm trying to think what, May 2nd, we discussed that. They say it was tech, ed and agriculture. It was Career Center.
Lots of flooring.
Flooring was huge.
Library, elementary library.
Elementary library and so was interior design, which I know nothing about. So, yeah, it was quite informative. Kara Hutchinson and Jessica Killenberger are helping out with the color pattern and interior design portion. They seemed like they really were in concept with the interior designer from Gray. I think when they go home after all the colors and patterns and options, they're gonna have a lot of time to think here and they're gonna come back with more ideas and there's gonna be.
I saw Jessica taking pictures.
Oh, yeah, it was great, so it was good. It's, it was great, so it was good. Trying to think what else. Next meeting is May thirtieth, and the topics are site development and electrical. The electrical, just a little update on that from the, this was the May second meeting. The new electrical room will be the small storage room between the two science rooms over here in nineteen sixty-five portion, so just out in this parking lot will be where the generator will sit and the big electrical box. Currently, the electrical panels and such are in the back of the kitchen. Somehow, they're gonna connect the new in the room between the two science rooms into that kitchen underneath the flooring, I believe. The kitchen staff will lose about a third to half of the back of their kitchen, which they use mainly for storage of dry goods. Well, and that's February, it's the first step in the process, and the science teachers will lose access to that room that they are storing their chemicals in. Some of the supplies can go in the classroom, some of the chemicals cannot be stored in the classroom, so we're gonna use Carrie Rettner's Spanish room next year. We're gonna divide it into three sections, one for a little office space for Carrie to have a home base, a small area for the chemicals that are not allowed to be stored with their students. Rock and his crew will have to make a dividing wall to keep that separate. They're gonna have to order a couple of cabinets for flammable and corrosive products and move that stuff in there. The reason they have to do that over the summer is because before February, all the cabinets and plumbing in that current science storage room have gotta come out, including the flooring, which is from nineteen sixty-five, half the floor is from nineteen sixty-five, so that'll have to be updated when kids aren't in the building probably over Christmas break. So, that's the first inconvenience we're gonna have around here. Yeah.
I think it's safe to say we're getting down to the final design at this point. Getting close.
Yes, and Bray will come up to the June meeting with PowerPoint presentation, and most of us have seen the 3D design, and I think that's the one that'll show us, but it's moved quite a lot.
Yeah, Clint said he feels real good where we are, and Andrew from Iran told me today, our budget looks good.
There is no change from May second to May sixteenth in the budget line, so, because I was getting an update every meeting, so that was good.
So, communications committee.
Well, we will be meeting again June second. Our last meeting, you know, we were, you know, a lot of time, our main focus is the Pioneer Times, of course, because that takes a lot of time. We've backed to doing it four times a year, which is great, because we had it for a long time. You know, it's always updates with the stylebook, social media, with the help of Steven, website, things like that. Always, just, all of those items are always a continuous work in progress. We're gonna get one more meeting in just before school gets out, because it's easier to meet during the school year than, well, we'll have to meet during the summer as well, and we're gonna work a little bit on this next meeting, talking about what's gonna be coming in the future additions, so.
Okay, meet and confer. Yep.
Okay, meet and confer. We met on May eighth. There was a list developed, and I shared the minutes in the packet. Yeah, so you can see the list of concerns they have that came out. It was good discussion. We're gonna meet quarterly, and some of the items are handbook items, so they'll come forward in the future. I emailed it out to the entire staff this last week. I have not received any feedback from staff on questions, but I did refer them to the person that represents their area. We have a elementary teacher, middle school teacher, high school teacher, cook, custodian, bus driver, we're missing someone, I'm missing aides.
Aides.
Yeah, everybody, every department's represented there, so I said, "If you have a question on one of the items, go see the person from your department to come see me." So, yeah, so that's the list we have to work on.
Yeah, so, I think it's a, it's a work in progress, but it was a good first.
Do you have another date set?
Yes.
Do we pick a day? I don't remember picking a day.
I don't remember picking a day.
We said quarterly, I know that, but I don't think we picked the next day.
I thought we went to. It does say in the notes, another meeting needs to be scheduled for, well, that was, that was April. That was, okay, it happened in May.
May eighth was the last, since last quarter, incorrect. And I think it says quarterly at the bottom.
I thought there was something that needed to be. Maybe it was through the minutes.
Well, I think.
I said I was gonna send the minutes out this week. I'm sure the people on the committee got an opportunity to read them, which they did, and I haven't got feedback since then.
A lot of those items on the list were almost administrative decisions that would be made at the administrative level, like, you know, like cameras on the bus and things. I think that one of the biggest things they wanted to talk about was the cap classes and how those people might be paid to get their master's degrees, which they require.
Will require.
But which are required for them to teach.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay. I don't have really any report. I've been to a lot of stuff, but I do have the Student Council report, which is on the busy night of track baseball and softball. The Student Council is hoping to acquire the television that's currently in the lunchroom. We hope to move it to the front entrance, entrance to be a display for announcements, upcoming events, athletic info, et cetera. We have talked to Mr. T. to see if he can lead us in the right direction on how to operate it.
Where's your gold chains?
The, the students inquired about, and these are just topics of discussion, I guess. They inquired about getting student ID cards, and they are discussing student schedules and have discussion about study halls, AP classes, weighted grades, and preparing for college while in high school. That's that report. Budget, the budget.
Budget, last week, we had a working session for the budget for wrapping up eighteen nineteen and for building nineteen twenty, and so there's been no change since last Wednesday.
Anything to report with facilities?
Rock is working diligently on the gymnasium at this point with the bids and working with those folks, and the electrical one, but another project on his summer schedule. And, yeah, cafeteria is moving forward too, so keeps making progress.
Like, anything that you want to talk about, Sue?
Oh, yes. Lot going on with the state budget, of course. Governor Evers' budget, particularly in the area of education, which is what I've been focused on, has been pretty much stripped by the Joint Finance Committee, but that doesn't mean we're giving up. We're fighting the good fight. This morning, I was involved in a conference call with the Ferry Coalition Board, and that group is guardedly optimistic regarding the one thousand dollar minimum aid per student, which would result in approximately five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for our district, which would be wonderful. This, there was legislation introduced by Representative Mursoul to the Joint Finance Committee, and I'm happy to report that it was supported by our representative kitchens. In the past, he has not always been supportive of that, but he has signed on now, and at least ten other legislators have also signed on. Yesterday, I spoke with the Chief of Staff in Senator Jock's office. While he could not commit to anything, obviously, he's not the senator, but he was very willing to listen to what I had to say and asked if Senator Jock could call me if he wanted more information. I said, "That would be wonderful." So, there's good things going on with that, and lots of people interested in it now who were not interested before. Some of the Joint Finance Committee members are talking about inflationary level increases only for public schools. That's not what we're looking for, but we need to continue to educate those people. Some items that have been excluded from budget consideration at this point was the levy credits moved to equalization aid, which is good for us because we don't get the equalization aid, so all my sources say that's off the table right now. What else is off the table at this point is private school choice caps and limitations, which is not so good because that, for us as public schools, because that means more money is going into those private school areas. WASB has sent a letter to the Joint Finance Committee supporting raising the revenue limits in accord with the CPI, increases in special ed funding, mental health initiatives, English learner funding, and gifted and talented along with some other areas. It's important that we continue to contact our legislators, and I know Melissa is very interested in this, and we also have a volunteer that Kyle recruited who is interested in providing some support, and I have agreed to meet with him as soon as he's available, and Melissa's gonna meet with us too, and we're gonna work on some letters and support to legislators for the kinds of things that we need here at Sebastopol. So, I think that will be a good effort if we can recruit any other people, particularly non-educators, because this is going to carry more weight, and I think you heard the message loud and clear at the.
Mrs. Metzger.
People's Service of this meeting that we really need to fight for what we need. I will be attending the Wisconsin Policy Forum in Madison next week on behalf of WASB, and that presentation will explore the state of education in Wisconsin as framed by the governor's budget proposal. There will be presentations by a panel of education experts and leaders, so that will provide some additional information. But anything we can do to continue to fight the good fight for this, and it's going to be a long fight from what I'm hearing. It doesn't look like we're gonna have a budget very soon for this, so more to follow.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to old business then, and these are second readings of policies that we looked at in the previous month. The board has received them again to review, so I will look for a motion to approve those first three policies under conflict of interest.
I will move to approve policy one-one-three-zero-three-two-three-zero-four-two-three-zero conflict of interest.
A second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the job descriptions policy.
I move to approve policy one-four-zero-zero job description.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion for the three employee anti-harassment policies.
Move to approve the second reading of one-six-six-two-three-three-six-two-four-three-six-two employee anti-harassment.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The nondiscrimination and access to equal employment opportunity policy.
Move to approve policy, second reading policy two-two-six-zero nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Religion in the curriculum.
Move to approve second reading of policy two-two-seven-zero religion in the curriculum.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. School performance report.
I'll make a motion to approve policy two-seven-zero-zero-point-zero-one, school performance report.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Employment of professional staff.
I'll move to approve policy, the second reading of policy three-one-two-zero, employment of professional staff.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Then we have a second reading of a new policy, education for employment.
Move to approve policy, second reading policy two-four-two-zero, education for employment.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move to new business with action on the student handbooks. Anyone have questions for those for the principals? Principals have anything you want to highlight?
Editorial, the score, it's an admin thing, the formatting is off on the weighted grades thing. So, just before you go final. A B C D doesn't line up with one, two, three, four, five.
That would, that was.
Yep, no.
Just using the aside comments that.
Yep, no, oh, yeah. Oh, got it.
And I think in the element, in the elementary, it had something about the, the officers. It has the old officers from last year.
And also on elementary, on page seven, I think this is an error, it says, "Students arriving to school between seven oh six and eight-ten will receive a tardy." I think it's.
The oh six.
Okay. Not to be, but I mean, it's like.
No, it's gonna get caught.
Okay. Sorry. We see, we really, we really need these things.
Anything else from anyone?
That, well, that was for Aaron. The one thing I had under disciplinary, I was concerned because fireworks were, abusive language was held to a higher, harder level than fireworks, and I just found that personally, I thought that was odd, because fireworks can, you know, kill somebody, so I'm trying to get to that. I apologize. Let's see, let's try page twenty-one. Yeah, so, under violations against school administrative procedures, fireworks, maximum action is suspension and police citation, but yet we have abusive language, maximum action, suspension, expulsion, and police citation. I think that needs to be addressed. I know words can hurt.
Okay. Fireworks one has existed a long time. I never seen an issue of fireworks, so.
Right, but I'm just, right. But now, it's like, I happened, ironically, was watching a television show yesterday, and people were playing with Roman candles, so.
You never know.
Yeah, you never know. So, I'm just saying, if something were to happen, our maximum is probably not stronger than fireworks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Could I revisit that? Please make an adjustment?
It's a working document right now.
I would just propose that we have the same maximum action for fireworks as we do for abusive language, which then gives us that range of consequences that would be a problem.
If there aren't any other questions or comment, questions from the board, comments from the administrators?
I need one more.
Sure.
I didn't include the club organizations that were discussed today in this, this year. Per the nice printed handbook that we made, it was due for printing on May twenty-second, so I would submit this back for printing, and it wasn't approved in, in June, I would have to contact the printing company, hoping that they could pull that out and or make an addition with the distrib, when we distribute it, and have to make that adjustment, if that's all.
I think that's the way we should proceed.
Yeah, that's good for the printers, ask them for printers.
It has to get printers, so.
We do include it, and then we can always, I mean, it can always.
You can always add it on, because there's something else that might change too, right? I mean, it's a, it's a working document, so.
I don't necessarily. We would have, we can have it.
If you prove it here.
Without it being in the handbook.
Yeah, if you prove it here now, you can have it without it, and then tell the students this day of school, these are now in there as well.
So, you're proposing to take the two clubs out of this printing?
And, and then in June, if it gets approved, the next day, call the printer and say, "Can you just put this in?" If they say no, okay, it's no different than if they couldn't take it out, so.
Doesn't mean we don't have that clause.
Yeah, you do insert.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify that one. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion then to approve the elementary student handbook?
Move to approve the elementary student handbook. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then motion to approve the middle school, high school handbook.
I made a motion to approve the middle school, high school student handbook.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have the first reading of some policies, and for the benefit of anyone watching online, the board gets these ahead of time, so we can read through them and pose questions, and we do a first reading here, and then they will come back in a future month for final approval. So I hear a motion for the nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity policies.
I move the, to approve the first reading of policies thirty-one-twenty-two and forty-one-twenty-two, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Staff discipline.
I make a motion to approve policy, first reading of policy three-one-three-nine, staff discipline.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Termination, non-renewal, and resignation.
Move to approve first reading of policy three-one-four-zero, termination, non-renewal, and resignation.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Eligibility of resident, non-resident students.
Move to approve policy five-one-one-one, eligibility of resident and non-resident students.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Open enrollment program inter-district.
Move to approve policy five-one-one-three, first reading, open enrollment program inter-district.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Non-immigrant students and visitor programs.
I make a motion to approve policy five-one-one-four, non-immigrant students and visitor programs.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Emergency medical authorization.
Make a motion to approve policy five-three-four-one, emergency medical authorization.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Use of tobacco by students.
Move to approve first reading policy five-five-one-two, use of tobacco by students.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Student anti-harassment.
I make a motion to approve first reading of policy five-five-one-seven, student anti-harassment.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We then have the first reading of a policy that we will be deleting, high school voter registration program.
Move to approve the first reading to delete policy five-seven-two-four, high school voter registration program.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then we have a new policy for district-sponsored clubs and activities.
Move to approve first reading of policy two-four-three-zero, district-sponsored clubs and activities.
Second.
Questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we will move to the support staff compensation. Okay, now, this printed again without an item. That is so weird. Weighted grades. Will Mr. Berry reporting on that, or Mr. Luke?
I'll start in China. We had a committee formed, all the department heads, Mr. Berry, Mrs. Meltcar, myself, we met at four occasions. We discussed various things, you know, pros and cons. We also checked out with thirteen different schools, we found six had weighted grades, seven did not. Some had multiple tiered systems of a five-point-oh system, six-point-oh system, seven-point-oh system. They also had some courses that could be five, or some in six. We decided to keep, then we sat down, we went over the pros and cons, and we came up with our list, and our recommendation is that we do go with a weighted system in the future, but we don't want to start with the juniors and seniors, we want to start with the class of twenty-twenty-two, because we don't want to change the concept, our part way through their high school career. We'd like to start simple with a five-point-oh scale with no tiered classes. We want every department offering something, so weighted class for an A would be valued at a five-point-oh. The athletic code would have to be adjusted as well to reflect that they have weighted classes, and we want to review it at the end of each school year, then see if it's on task, or if we need to change it from there. Mr. Berry, you want to add more?
Yeah, then I follow up by working with all the departments, so we could include the honors curriculum that was really taking place in each subject area, those courses that are deemed by our staff as a rigorous expectation that students should seek to obtain, or push themselves to obtain, and that's how we've generated the list of those courses that would be considered honors.
Is class of twenty-two the current freshman class?
Yes.
Correct. The next to your sophomore's.
Next to your sophomore's.
Right.
I did a little research, just for my own benefit, which I'm happy to share, I contacted Brent Rube from Scholarships Incorporated, he's the executive director there. I think you had mentioned at a previous meeting, we get a significant amount of money from Scholarships Incorporated, and I wanted to just get his input on how they handle weighted grading. He said the majority of high schools in Brown and Door County, which Scholarships Inc. serves, use a traditional scale, which we currently have now. Several do use a weighted scale. However, in those instances, we do ask the counselors to provide an unweighted GPA, and that is the GPA we use for evaluating our applicants. A few schools that have switched to a weighted GPA also list the unweighted equivalent right on the student's transcript. This is helpful, as we do not have to request the counselors to do that individually. So that was his take on it, and then one of the Gibraltar board members had mentioned to me that Gibraltar is going away from weighted grades now, and I checked with Tina Van Muur, and she had the principal send me some information on that. They are going to a laude system, which is similar to a college system, where they will be awarding summa cum laude's to three-point-nine to four-point-oh, magna cum laude's to three-point-seven, three-point-eight-nine-nine, and cum laude to three-point-five, to three-point-six-nine-nine. He said that we noticed many top students were overloading themselves with weighted classes, adding considerable stress when they take five-plus A P courses. As a result, we saw students taking classes because they felt they needed to compete for the top spots, under the old system of valedictorian, salutatory, and a top twenty percent honors. In our opinion, this led to students taking courses for the wrong reasons. Additionally, our weighting system did not offer weighted courses for all types of courses, and seemed to be out of balance. Tech Ed, music art, are some examples he cited. Also, when colleges are reviewing applications, they unweight the grades when considering students for admission. I did contact U W Madison admissions office, and spoke to an admissions counselor there. She said they give no preference to weighted grades, they don't unweight that. Instead, they look at a holistic approach of the students, the rigor the students has taken, the co-curriculars and volunteer opportunities, and particularly the rigor of the coursework. And she said, if you go to a weighted graded system, then you need to be sure to include a school profile with the transcripts of the students, so that they understand the whole system and how it works together. And this really relates to redefining Ready, which CISA is doing now, to show the profile of your school, how many A P classes are taken, what A C T scores are for your district, all those kinds of things. So I did make some copies of this, if you want to take a look at it, of both the examples from Scholarships Inc. as well as Gibraltar.
Is Gibraltar not valedictorian?
Uh, not, they're going away from it. I don't know about this year.
They do, they had them on the radio this year.
They were just on the radio the other day. So, well, I was wondering about the scholarship for valedictorian.
Well, it just goes to the highest GPA. They're going away from salutatory and valedictorian according to their principal.
And that's all colleges, I've been looking into that too. When they unweight the grades, the reality is they look at the curriculum, because, you know, that's us, so that's where it matters for our kids, but
The rigor.
Right, the rigor, right. But class standing, in a way this school functions right now, that's not what we do. We look at a number, and that's how it's evaluated. And then there's some of the other discussable incentives, so these are valid points, I think they're good to have, but I like the fact that every year you look at it and see what the outcome's out, because even without it, then people are taking the wrong classes on a four-point-oh scale. They take the easier grade, they get the A, and that's not the right reason either. So you could argue they're taking classes for the wrong reason, no matter what we call them. We could call them alphabet soup, but kids will always take classes for what they think is important, and one parent might think it's not for the right reason, so, I mean, this is good research, I think it'll help.
We did talk about magnum cum laude system, and we said, well, that's a different discussion than weighted grades, because that's a classification compared to weighted grade, so we stayed stuck to the course of weighted grades, and magnum cum laude could next thing we can study.
Which is like, my high school was honors, high honors, highest honors, you know, was entitled it.
And we have that in the program for graduation honors.
And I might challenge, like, I like that you did have tech ed in here, right, and there might be some other areas in time that we could find, you've got welders that can weld underwater, I'm not proposing we have that class, but in every area, there is advanced skill sets, and so that's the other thing that can be looked at in time, because we don't change our curriculum overnight, but if, you know, those are some of the things every year you could look at, you know, whatever the area is.
And it also gives every student an opportunity to earn that kind of
We have chefs that go to, you know, high caliber schools, so even in the face, I mean, there's a lot of programs you can look into, depending on what your priorities and motivations and drives are. So I think that's what, we looked at past schools and before, currently this group has looked at it, and now you bring in some more information, we saw the other schools, that's good.
Was there strong support from the teachers, what do we agree?
At the first meeting, no, and then after, because, well, the discussion was, we don't need them, or we don't ever have them, and then we went back and forth, and we had pros and cons, and we contacted the thirteen other schools and said, well, half do, half don't, and in the discussion, we got the point, but we said, here's the recommendations, so it was department heads, and it was Meltcar, and Mr. Berry, and myself, so, you know. It was good debate.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the weighted grades program as presented.
Second.
First questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Two ayes, Gene. Yes, I guess. Okay, then we will move on to the support staff compensation model.
The recommendation is for the support staff to receive the two-point-four-four percent increase. There was discussion at meet and confer about having more categories added from six months to eighteen months, you get a raise after six months and after eighteen months. The discussion was that at eighteen months, you've been there less than two years, and you're at the same rate as someone who's been with the district twenty years. So May thirtieth, the support staff compensation committee is going to get back together, and we're going to do some math to figure out where that is, because my concern is changing it for those people that are between months one and seventeen, you can't change it for them along the way, because they've been looking down the road of where they're going to be at, and so we got to come up with a model for that, but for right now, and they do two-point-four-four, so the aides before they go home for summer can have their assignment nowhere they're at, and we can always adjust it going forward if we can come up with a model that works, but I don't want to end up with a salivated ladder like the teachers had, where the ladder was broken, and it took us two and a half years to get it straightened out again, so we got to make sure it's equitable. And just a couple other things that the compensation staff for support's going to work on that night as well, it's going to be a lot of math, because one of the things in meet and confer was paying off sick days upon leaving the district, and a dollar amount per day wasn't discussed, and how much that would be, and how much it would cost me to the district, so May thirtieth, we're going to do some math. So at this time of day, to see the two-point-four-four, like the rest of the staff received, be given to the support staff compensation.
I make a motion to approve the support staff.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Did you get that motion, Gene?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Then we have the staff leave request in your packet from Danielle Hansen, the speech-language pathologist.
Danielle currently is a full-time employee, she just had, as the letter states, her fourth child, she would like to be able to stay home one day per week moving forward. As Margraff and I met, could be a phone with her about that, you know, make sure our kids are covered. Last year, we increased our aide time for that area by
Twenty hours.
Twenty hours per week, and currently now with Danielle out on maternity leave, we have three days a week, so speech therapist here?
We do, certified speech therapist, three days a week, and then for two other half-days, we have aide support.
Right. So then, and Danielle, before she left, she got her I E Ps completed and that worked done, so she's requesting to be eighty percent next year. Our concern is making sure that the kids get the services they need. Danielle knows her workload best, she thinks she can manage that, but I also don't want her then on the fifth day doing all paperwork at home with her I E Ps and such, so I recommend we try it, and we reevaluate how that's going. Speech pathologists are extremely hard to find in the state, I don't care what quarter of the state you're in, they're hard to find, so.
So then her compensation would be reduced
Yeah, right.
At her benefits?
We issued her a contract by May fifteenth as required, and if this is approved, then we just should renew contract based off of the motion, right? But she's got to let us know how it's, how the workload's doing, because
We're going to work with her pretty closely.
Yeah, and every year, her workload fluctuates depending on the kids that
And it's bigger than
Graduated on a speech or not.
Than it was last year, we just did some of the numbers.
Right.
Is there a motion?
Is there a forecast for next year?
All right.
And is it busier next year?
It's forty, yeah, a few, a couple, but it always, I mean, it's going on. So I've reached out to other speech and language pathologists in the area, asked if they might be interested, you know, just, you know
We're very fortunate to
You know, so one had declined, but there's another one that's waiting to get back to me too, so when I hear of people who are certified to do that, I'm definitely a hundred percent reaching out to see their interest level, and for them to know that there's a need at Sebastopol.
Is there a motion?
Are we, wonder if we're approving it? It's not a staff leave request?
Is it a leave?
No, no, she's requesting it be reduced to eighty percent.
Okay, so I move to approve the request of Danielle Hansen to be reduced to eighty percent.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Scott Walker has been coaching football here, assistant coach since nineteen ninety-one, and he's resigning.
I'd just like to say a few words, I know Scott, I coached with Scott, and he's helped us with a lot of transitions in our football program. I first started coaching with Scott when we had a combined program between Gibraltar and Sebastopol, and then Scott stepped forward and was a big part of the process of bringing football back to just Sebastopol exclusively, and then Scott actually left and coached at another school, or stopped coaching for a few years, but then when we made the transition to hate man football, he was a big part of that transition as well, so he's been a big part of our school's transition, and this year, of course, the success that we have had, and I know our students really appreciate
And I know our students really appreciate him on the field. He's not completely leaving the program, it's just responsibilities have changed. We'll still see him, we'll still be in the booth and helping out.
Is there a motion to approve Spats resignation, to accept Spats resignation?
I'll move to accept the resignation of Scott Walker as a high school assistant football coach.
Second.
Questions or discussion?
All that, I did thank him, so with all that background information, we should really think it's a district program.
And thank him for his service.
His name needs to go on the longevity plaque, it's called. Along with Rock Franks. We'll work on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Our next regular school board meeting is June 20th. We will have middle school graduation sometime in that first part of June and then high school graduation on June 2nd. And I'll be sending you all a message to see who would be attending those events. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are adjourned.